We're on the special meeting of the municipal council order. Please, I guess, in the pledge of allegiance, let the Council declare.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this book with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you and welcome to our special meeting to consider appropriations to various community groups. I have to the microphone a little time so you can hear me. Alright. And hopefully that's better. So, we're gonna go through and consider requests for appropriations as part of our annual awarding appropriations according to our budget. We have a budget item of, I believe, twenty thousand dollars for supporting community groups. Excuse me. Our practice in the past has been to go through these relatively quickly because, for the most part, the council is very familiar with all of these groups. And we had a... There are twelve groups, so if we spent five minutes on each group, you can see that there's an hour going, we haven't done anything other than here's something we probably already know. So, with the exception of, uh, Councilman James, uh, if you have... You may have questions, and if you do have questions, these groups are... I'm afraid you ask them. Uh, we'll start out with an opportunity for each group to make a very short, minute presentation about why you should be awarded the appropriation that you requested. And the questions the council will ask, they'll ask you the questions, although we do have all of your submissions in our packet, and we know that the council has gone through them. And again, we're familiar with what you do in our community, so you may not see a lot of questions, and if you want to see them, it's not... It's not a lack of respect for what we do for our community, especially in fact, we've got a lot to do tonight, and we are familiar with your organization. So, I'm gonna go through these in the order that they were presented. The council has a... Has a sheet like this, in which you will... Each councilperson will fill out the amount that they think should be given from the twenty thousand dollars for each of these groups. And we encourage you, that all of the numbers that you put out add up to twenty thousand or less, because we can't spend more than twenty since that's our budget. Once we get everybody's input on this sheet, the city manager will calculate an average for all of the individual, uh, individual inputs. Then, from that average, that average number, we will come up with a staff recommendation and we'll come back to the council in the next meeting for, uh, for consideration and award, and awarding to each of the groups. The staff recommendation will not necessarily be the exact average, and the exact average may not include every individual councilperson's input if the input is way out of whack with every other councilperson. What we're trying to do is come to a consensus on the council, that we can have presented in our next meeting and we'll vote on it. And if somebody puts in ten thousand dollars for one group, or zero for one group, it throw the average out enough that it may not... It may not use that. So, just reconsider, we put in the numbers, make them, make them, uh, real numbers that we're ready to divide them with twenty thousand of these various groups. With that, we'll start with the first one on my list, which was stated is the Aguafria Food and Clothing Bank. And I just told... Well, we have... I guess we have, we have an R C P from something soon... Is it Leanne, is she here?
Yep.
Alright, Leanne, come on up.
Hi.
Well, stay where you're at, that's true, that's fine.
Can you take the microphone, please?
I guess you have to go to the microphone.
Sure. My name's Leanne Leonard, I'm the executive director of the Aguafria Food and Clothing Bank. We serve the entire Southwest Valley, which includes Abingale, Goodyear, Buckeye, Tolleson, Cashin, and Litchfield Park. We provide free emergency food and clothing assistance to anyone in need in those cities. In addition, we also have showers on site, senior food boxes, as well as baby care bags. We have two annual members, our holiday food boxes. We provide Thanksgiving and Christmas boxes that include Christmas toys, as well as our backpacks and war program where we provide school uniforms, as well as backpacks and supplies. And we have been the recipient of money from the city of Litchfield for many years now, and we're super grateful for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Council? Doesn't look like it. Thank you for all your service to the community, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. Next one on the list is Blue Star Homes. Looks like we have Teresa and Catherine.
Good evening, my name's Catherine McGready, and this is Teresa Pint, and we're representing the Blue Star Homes of the Southwest Valley. Uh, we serve our currently serving military and veterans, um, basically in most of the state, because there are only two chapters in the state of Arizona that is current. And so, we submitted for two projects. Uh, our first project is, uh, sending care packages to currently serving deployed military members, and that was a project we had last year. Uh, we sent over fifteen hundred packages last year, and, uh, excuse me, with this... With the postage going up, it's always beneficial for us to get, uh, support to continue that mission. Our second project that we submitted for this year was a project that we haven't done for a few years, but it is building playhouses for, uh, children of currently serving military members. And, um, the playhouses, um, are provided to families, um, we've done over twenty-seven of them, and, um, the cost per two coat is over a thousand dollars for each home playhouse. And it provides a safe place for a child or children of a military family to go out and talk with their loved one that is deployed overseas. They've also provided them a comfort zone, and that is a place that they can take their loved one back in, rebook, or just hang out, so they can be reborn and help their parents. Yeah. These are, these are large playhouses, like shed-type playhouses for the backyard. So, it is a big project, and we're hoping that we will get your support. And I just wanna put in a little plug, our, um, last year, one of our projects was the garden over by the memorial, so hopefully we'll see all of you on Memorial Day, because it's looking pretty good. We worked really hard to get that, uh, going this year. So, thank you.
Questions from council? Alright, thank you for your service to our community. Next group is the Catatude Arts.
Good evening, Sandra Reagan, from one seven seven South of Litchfield, and, uh, I'm representing Catatude Arts. Again, thank you for past support. This year, uh, we are actually expanding our Fall of Youth Junior Program, which has been in existence for many years, where advanced placement students from local high schools attend a four-week, uh, class, basically, so they're able to complete their portfolio for graduation. We also have a new program called, uh, mentor, uh, neuro mentoring, where the students from Fall of Youth Junior can expand their knowledge and they do public art projects. And we've, uh, we've now seen several of them in, uh, the city of Goodyear. Thank you again for previous support. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Thank you.
Teresa, thank you for your service, our community.
Thank you.
Next item is City of Abingale Senior Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Sandy Love, because I'm the senior services manager with the city of Abingale. And, um, the, the senior center, uh, really appreciates the support over the last several years from Litchfield Park, and, um, are hopeful that you will continue to support us. We provide, um, anywhere from about eighty-five to a hundred, uh, comforting meals that are at the center, um, and then an additional about sixty-five to seventy-five, called delivered meals. Um, we also provide transportation to seniors to and from the center, or for field trips, and, um, different activities, exercise, that sort of thing. Um, beginning January first, we lowered our membership age to fifty. We're looking to attract younger, more active adults as well, and expand our programs. And so, we are very hopeful that you will continue to support us as we serve at Abingale, Goodyear, and Litchfield Park. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Questions from council? Just a quick one. Councilor Claire?
Just looking at your accountability, uh, it says here that you provide, uh, meals for residents in Litchfield. It looks like cost to you guys is roughly sixty-five hundred dollars, but you're only looking for about twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, because we understand that you only have a budget of twenty thousand, and there's many other agencies that are deserving. Um, we're fortunate in that we get, uh, plenty from area, uh, area agency on aging, and, um, and the city of Abingale, um, puts in actually more than AAA does, and so, you know, but we've got rising costs each year with food and fuel and staff, and we might not sell it. So, while that, when it fully comes across work, hopefully that you would consider that support.
Do you have to raise that up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you coming and making the presentation, and I'm gonna put in the same plug that I've put in the last, I don't know how many, at least a decade. And that is, with this one, this is one act, this is one request that we have an obligation to fund. And these are our oldest residents, and they need this service, and it's something that it would put their lives in peril if they didn't have the, you know, services that Abingale is providing. And I very much appreciate the fact that, as a city, that you have been able to provide those services to our residents. So, this is, this is an important one, that everybody needs to keep this in mind, that this is kind of unusual request. These are people who very much need this assistance that live in our community, and we have an obligation to fund at least what we can. So, and we appreciate the fact that, over the years, we have never, we have never funded to a level that Abingale has ever spent. So, we appreciate the financial support that Abingale gives to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item is Homelife Connection.
I don't have my contacts in, so I can't really see. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers, my name's Dawn Bogart, I'm co-CEO of Homelife Connection, or H Y C. H Y C partners with more than a hundred and thirty high schools in Maricopa County and Flagstaff to serve more than seven hundred youth who are experiencing homelessness and enrolled in high school. We serve the Aguafria District, which includes Millennium High School, and currently, we have ten youth who are living in Litchfield Park that are participating in the program. We have a comprehensive social services program that includes case management and housing. We still have our home in Goodyear for transitional housing, and we recently opened a facility in Central Phoenix that will house up to twenty youth. Um, right now, of the kids that participate in the program, ninety-five percent of the kids are staying in school and completing their education, and more than eighty-five percent are going on to post-secondary education, the military, or going into the workforce with sustainable ages. You've been wonderful with your support, um, this year. I'm very proud to say that we actually have thirteen municipalities supporting the program. And our goal is for sustainability, to make sure that each area supports the kids that are there, and engages with the kids that are there, because overall, that will provide sustainability to the program.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Ray, sir?
Thank you. Is there a major financial, did you spend one hundred and sixty-four thousand a year? You've got one half way in the bank?
I'm sorry?
You, your budget's one hundred and sixty-four thousand a year?
No.
Well, what is your budget?
Two point eight million.
That makes more sense, okay, so I've been something in here since before.
Yeah.
What's that?
You bet, yeah.
I guess the numbers are very small. Okay, that's, that's my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the service you give to our community, I know it's important for all of you. Next, uh, group is Quanis, and I don't think they're here. If they had been here, I would have asked them the question of, well, this is the first time they've ever applied to us for funding, and it's a little bit unusual in the sense that, uh, we really are not set up to deal with clubs like Quanis, or Rotary, or that type of group. Quanis actually funds some of the activities we do in Litchfield Park, so I'm not, not sure how their request really fits into this appropriations process. But, we can discuss that more in any about how people decide when or not to give their funds. Uh, Litchfield Home Elementary School, P T S A. It's like, they have an election tonight, so they're not here. So, any questions you have, then we'll have to get a hold of them directly. Litchfield Park Historical Society, Nancy Shaker is here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Uh, first of all, I'm Nancy Shaker, president of Litchfield Park Historical Society, and with me tonight is Lisa Haggerty, our vice president. And I asked Lisa to join me because she's been, uh, an integral part of a lot of our outreach programs, specifically La Pasada's, our speakers, uh, program, and, uh, some of the other, the, uh, children's historian program, so I'm glad to have her here tonight. Uh, we're now regional with the Southwest Valley, and, uh, we've grown considerably. In the past few years, we really appreciate your continued support, because that has really helped us grow and helped us put on the programs that we do. The funds we're asking for this year are similar to last year, to expand the La Pasada, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. Uh, it's a cultural event downtown, uh, that, the same as our speaker series, and, uh, many other things that we do are at no cost, there's no entrance fee, there's, uh, no cost for the speaker series. We also, uh, just reprinted two booklets that we hand out, we have a walking tour that's free to anyone that comes into our museum, we also have them at the city and hand them out at all of the downtown city events. Uh, it's a great, uh, opportunity to learn about the history, especially the downtown history of Litch, the city of Litchfield Park. Yes. Any questions?
Questions from council? Thank you for your presentation and the work you do for our community, we appreciate it.
Thank you again for all your support, we appreciate it.
Okay, next item is, the next group is Litchfield Park Little League. Jason Gibbs is here. Nope. Okay. The next item, uh, next group is Meals of Joy. We have a primary and a alternate, but primary is Larry Suratch, and I don't think we'll have Larry Colossus. Larry started this group. I know that, because I remember when he first...
I've been here before, right?
Yeah, you have to be a lot of times.
Good evening, I'm Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure being here. I obviously, as you know, missed last year, and the reason I came back to help last year because I didn't feel the amount of senior clients that we had in the area, I thought that the funds should go to other causes that, uh, wait another year. So, I think as our report actually said, we have five clients right now at the city of Litchfield. It's actually moved up since the report was issued to you. Uh, we're now up to seven, and I'm pending for review on Friday. So, um, we're nine years, um, now into existence. Uh, we've come a long ways, and we've done a lot of different things to enhance our services to our senior. Obviously, one of the main things is providing hot nutrition meals to them, very similar to meals on wheels. Um, we have volunteers, about sixty, seventy volunteers that deliver, and we now cover about nine cities, and, uh, hopefully by midsummer, we'll be entering into Victoria and Delve Street, which will be our tent area. Um, seems like every time I go out and speak at different engagements, it's amazing how little some people still know about Meals of Joy. And in fact, I just talked to a group on Monday, three thousand seniors in Sunset West that have never heard of Meals of Joy. I'm very excited about our program, we love our samples. Uh, we're introducing some new programs, we started them up three months ago. Our, uh, mission is to, uh, get appointed with churches, and have the pastors look at senior members and their church that are living home alone, with no friends, no place to go, and so, we're providing lunch for them once a month, so they can get out of their home and meet people that have their own friendship with their own church, and feel more comfortable with, a little bit different than the city senate. Uh, we hope that it's gonna continue, so far, it's been successful. We're averaging fifty to seventy senior members that go lunching, and that's a good number just to start. And for us, it's just a thing that these seniors have been sitting home alone, without anyone to talk to. And, uh, this year, uh, we're down a little bit on total volume of meals, so it'll be probably around thirty-two thousand meals by the end of this year. And, uh, the reason that we've kind of dropped a little bit from last year is obviously with any nonprofit, it takes donations and grants to continue your mission, and it was kind of light last year, so I had to kind of pull back, but now we're heading back up the stream again, probably looking at the next fiscal year, probably about forty to forty-two thousand meals. So, um, what can I say, you have a man, our mission is never ending yet, there's always plenty of seniors out there to pay for help, and we hope we're continuing to do that job, and that, having a nutritional meal. But we also do a little bit more than just deliver the meal while we're there, we're looking at their health factor, whether they, you know, are in depression, or they need some help, presumably, and, uh, so, uh, we kind of watch out for that, and, uh, but, uh, we maintain that bond, make a relationship with our seniors as we move forward. Is it all, have you listened to any questions?
Questions from council? Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next group is Sounds of Autism.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Let's say you're an old person. I'm Pricki Barrientos, founder of Sounds of Autism. Our mission is to safely integrate children and families of autism back into society through love and support. Over the last two years, we really expanded that. Uh, we realized that a lot of the programs that we started, um, from prenatal till the end of life, also worked with individuals in the senior populations, uh, mental, behavioral health, um, the school districts, law enforcement, different things like that. So, uh, we have four, uh, communities that we serve, and we serve the families of at-risk individuals, we serve community and community leaders, we educate, uh, educators and law enforcement and firefighters to educate them on how to seek out these families, so that if they find them during their call for service, or through the educational programs, uh, that we can be a support solution. So, kind of a crazy story, this year, we, um, met Jeanette Barsky, um, with the magazine, um, that she writes for, and she shared with us that, um, she would write an article about us. And with that article, um, she was able to help a few different families in crisis. Um, one of them, they had a child, I called the child, he was an adult, uh, working in the local area, and his boss was mentally abusing him, and, um, the parents were beside themselves, and they were residents of Litchfield Park. We were able to help that family, um, seek some solutions with, um, legal advice, and, uh, they were able to help their son get the help that he needed. Um, we also had a, a police officer that was responding to a call in your city, and, um, the kid, uh, had money taken from him, from a predator, and, um, they asked if we could help support the family and just educating different solutions. So, we have really become what we call the responders of autism or at-risk. Um, when individuals are in stress or in crisis, um, they ask for our help, and we're able to help them with all the relationships we've built. We've been around twelve years, we have four phases. Uh, we work with Litchfield School District, Aguafria School District, the Quanis Club that you spoke of, um, we're working with them in collaboration to come up with some peer-to-peer mentorship programs throughout the, um, schools, so that when we get these kids to an adult life, they're not just sitting at home, that they're actually integrating into society. And so, our workforce team this year is what we wrote the, uh, grant for, and, uh, we have right now seven students, one of them is a Litchfield Park, um, address, and, um, these individuals are working with us on helping support senior locations, we're cleaning homes for people that can't. Uh, we're going out to abatement, um, type, uh, residents and pulling weeds, or doing whatever we need to help support, uh, these families, as well as, um, serving and supporting all of our law enforcement. And I think we have thirteen cities right now in the West Valley, and we're moving north, and we'll be throughout the whole state by the end of the year.
Same.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Alright, our last group is Southwest Living Closet. No? Alright. Well, we all know Southwest Living Closet. So, we've worked for each of the groups, you have your, you have your form to be filled out, you have to fill that and get back to the city manager in the next... Uh, can we set a deadline, Mr. City Manager? Couple days? Will you?
Twenty-six.
What's that?
May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth, you're giving a lot of time. So, get back, and we'll have, we'll have it ready for, uh, next council meeting. Do you have any questions, uh, addressed to the city manager? Alright. With that, I think we're finished with this agenda. We want to do the executive session, so there's a motion to adjourn. Second? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Alright. So, the appropriations special meetings adjourned, and we're gonna call it a order, our next special meeting. Which is the Community Facilities District. Village of Litchfield Park, Village of Litchfield Park Community Facilities District. That is called a order. And we're gonna skip the pledge since we just did a pledge. First item, business is approval of the minutes. I presented my name, Rod. Does anybody, do you think we have any questions about the minutes from the last meeting of the Community Facilities District of the Village of Litchfield Park? That is our motion to approve minutes. For a second? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Alright. Questions adopted. Next item is the Village of, the Village of Litchfield Park Community Facilities District, and the budget is Peter Som.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight I have the preliminary budget for the Village of Litchfield Park, um, C F D. The debt service for fiscal year twenty-four is three hundred and sixty-five thousand ninety dollars, so that is what I am recommending we set the levy for. Um, there is a reserve account, I don't, um, anticipate any, um, dilinked taxes, I think we will collect it nearly one hundred percent. Um, this is an estimated tax rate of one point one six eight nine.
Any questions from council? If not, is our motion to adopt, pretend a budget estimate of assessments for fiscal year twenty-four for the Village of Litchfield Park Community Facilities District? And authorize that the published notice of the budget and tax order. Is there a second? Any discussion? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? And that included the direction of staff to, uh, hold a public hearing on June twenty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to adjourn the Village of Litchfield Park Community Facilities District? For a second? All who favor please say aye. Can you oppose? Alright, adjourn. Next item is Litchfield Square Community Facilities District Special Meeting. Are there minutes, are there any questions from Mr. Rod on the minutes? Is there a second? Any discussion? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Alright. Minutes are approved. Next item is, is Mr. Peterson has a budget and estimate for twenty-one-four, which should be pretty solid.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this one is really easy, we had no activity in this C F D yet, so the budget was zero.
Yes, so the questions are approved, I agree, the budget will be... You like zero? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Alright. Your budget is zero is approved, and your, your assessment of the table is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn? For a second? Any discussion? All who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? We are adjourned. Just one, just one. Okay. We've called a regular meeting of the city council of order, again, we're gonna dispense the pledge since we just did it. First item is Councilman... First item is house reports. Who would like to start? Helsa Bren Watson, would you like to start your report?
Uh, just returned in the last two weeks from, I'm not in Georgia. So sorry, we kind of out of the loop, but trying to talk about the things. Not an awful lot that I've been engaged in, but I went with Matthew to one of the court appearances of one of our full offenders, uh, from the damage of the Hilltop. Found that process interesting, but waiting to see what the outcome is. Uh, lots of exciting things going on in Litchfield Park Historical Society, which is now known as the Pofita Htril Heritage Center. So be watching, put some announcements coming in your direction regarding that.
Great. Helsa Robinson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if you have to kind of report on it, it is, uh, the work that Keith is doing, uh, over at, uh, Stacks Park, at the little parking area with about twenty-two parking spaces. And it's coming along here, a little post in our, in a row, and we're handling it. And, um, everything seems to be working out just fine.
Great. Helsa James. Helsa Doughty.
Yeah, I last week did have the pleasure of meeting the new superintendent for the Litchfield Elementary District. It's Dr. Davidson from, he's coming from Peoria and was very impressed, great first impression. So, um, I think he's coming from a big district to a small district, a K-12. And as he said, I think in the paper today even, he's not going to be inheriting many issues because he's coming into a really good thing. So I'm excited. Here's on.
Great. Helsa. Clarence.
Just wanted to, uh, I was fortunate enough to get to participate in the Maverick tournament that was, uh, held this past week. And just what a great event that was, the energy that was out there, my kind of participants in there, some money raised for charities. It gets the score a lot of votes. And, uh, you see the Mavericks are really stepping up and making a difference in our local communities. I just want to call that out.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, I don't know anything. Now we'll go to the last meeting, the response to last meeting, he's called the committee. We were requested to speak, so there was no, there was a lot of it. City manager already pressed that out, so currently haven't done it yet. Okay, the city manager, yes, we had almost been there earlier before.
Works for me, so I think we've got plenty to cover tonight, likely are.
So any questions? City manager sends us an information, obviously throughout the month. Any questions for the city manager? All right, let's keep on. That's why I crossed it out. Next item is a call of community. I don't know, are there any requests to speak? Uh, this opportunity for anyone to address the council on non-agenda items. All right, so there's no, there are no requests to speak. Next item is presentations. Mr. City Manager, you have permission to, there are new city employees.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Council, you will see here, these are a lot of employees that have been hired over the last six months. Certainly, some of them are newer than others. I want to specifically recognize the employees that were here with us tonight. First of all, thank you all. We know Maria already, Maria is our new deputy clerk. Maria, can you wave back there? Maria's done a great job, glad to have her. Also, we have Brittany Johnson here with us, she's here with Rick. Welcome, Brittany. We also have Victor Martinez, Republic Works. And, and Sam, I was just, I was going to say, it's the other Sam, you've been here with us for a while, so thank you for being here tonight anyway. So that is our new employees that are here with us tonight. We do, of course, have one that's been on our list and they're, they're all doing a great job and glad to have them. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Welcome to those new employees who are here, welcome. They've been with us for all of time, such a part of our family and, uh, of associates. Yeah, you don't have to stay all night. This is going to be one of the most interesting, vivid, fun things that you can do. A couple hours you can go through, it's a lot better than watching Netflix or anything like that. If you have something to do, it's fine if you want to, if you'd like to leave, you may do that also.
Back to your bed.
All right, next item is our, is our report from Good Year Fire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Wade, WFI chief, Good Year Fire presents April's numbers. I'll start with the, uh, the easy one, that's the double services. Uh, most of those categories reported zero activity except for the occupancy inspections at thirteen. Um, the run total for the month of April was eighty-one, almost our highest run total. Uh, that honor belongs to December of twenty-one during COVID. Uh, of those eighty-one calls, we had one trash fire, seventy-one EMS calls, five calls per service, four good intent calls, uh, to, uh, to make up total of eighty-one. That is under our expected, or last year's total of eight twenty-four by number. Uh, looking at the, uh, the reason why for the increase, we saw thirty-two percent of the calls come from two, two facilities, La Loma and, uh, Las Cruces Address. Uh, La Loma's a little bit larger number than, than, uh, previous months. Uh, most of those were legitimate ALS type calls. Uh, and when we see the increase in number, we'll look for those non-emergency type calls that we can, we can stop or intervene or, uh, address with staff, just like, uh, the facility on Las Cruces. Uh, we do follow up with each of them on a monthly basis. When, when those spikes do occur, ensure that, uh, they're providing their staff with appropriate training and, uh, advising them when a nine-one-one call, it's still around wasting, um, services. Uh, but that's the same for any patients.
Questions from council? All right.
I was talking to someone, uh, a couple weeks ago now, and they, they were concerned about all these calls, these EMS calls. And, and it's, uh, you know, we kind of talked about a solution of you, you see these, I follow, I can't get out kind of buttons, you know, that, that, uh, go right within the facility. And so you, they don't jump right out of nine-one-one or anything like that. They're, all the, the residents are taught to use those. And that goes to our emergency station or something like that, right in the facility. And I, I was just wondering if you would, uh, if any of that is an option or, or if they do attend to some.
So, Mayor and Council.
Excuse me. The seven o'clock meeting's over.
When they do have those fall, they're, they are alert staff, um, and, and they're supposed to be trained in order to get those folks back into the position or give them where they're back in debt. Um, sometimes that staff is not trained appropriately and that's where those, those excessive numbers come in, um, in those months. And that's when we follow up with, with their staff on site to make sure that they are training their employees. Turnover is a large problem with that one facility, so they're constantly having new people cycle in.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your service, Mayor, we appreciate it. Would you guys all appreciate what they do for our residents?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item is a report from the Happyville Police Department. Sergeant Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Brian, Avondale PD, that presented April's numbers. So in March of April, we had a total of two hundred and seventy calls per service. Out of those calls, fifty-four percent of them were officer-initiated calls and forty-six percent of them were citizen-initiated calls or reactions, uh, they called us. Uh, we had forty-three citizen contacts. They'll let us sort of call for service, that's where maybe we're out and about, we end up contacting a citizen. Oops, sorry. We end up contacting a citizen and, uh, we, we will try on our body camera to record a contact that doesn't necessarily, uh, is a call per service. Uh, some of the big calls we had this month, on a vehicle tent, we had a stolen vehicle that we hit through our block cameras. Uh, we ended up finding the vehicle at the Whitewarm Resort. It was a stolen car on the Flagstaff from December. The driver also had a valid arrest warrant, so we ended up arresting the driver, recovering the vehicle that was overturned over to the federal agency. Um, the sixteenth of December, we had a DUI accident at the Roundabout over here on, uh, Litchfield Road and not the Litchparkway. It was a single vehicle motorcycle accident, it was a DUI, uh, no serious injuries. We did have one person that was, uh, transported for precautionary. And then, uh, on the twentieth, we had a stolen golf cart from the community that initially didn't have that many leads, they didn't have a plate on it or any, uh, VIN number for us to really follow up with. But we were able to get a few leads through the social media sites that Litchfield Park residents use as well as our block cameras, where we developed a few investigative leads. Uh, we were able to recover the golf cart and return it back to the victim. And then, uh, just last week on the twelfth of May, we, uh, our community action team did some undercover surveillance where they located the suspect and arrested him and placed him in jail, so. Um, and then last night, it is this May, but because it just happened, it might have heard talk about it, we had another accident at the Roundabout, and that was another DUI accident as well. Uh, two vehicles going northbound, the vehicle in the outside lane, the spirit to the inside lane, it was intoxicated. And then ended up going off into the side right there, but, uh, no major injury on that as well. Any questions, community mayor, anything?
Any questions from council? Council Robinson.
You had a, a pretty large article in a newspaper called Independent, I don't know if you saw it or...
Yes, I did see that article about the block cameras.
Yeah, right. And, uh, it's setting there's something to the, to the effect of, that there's a lot of information out there, much more than just the license plate and, uh, and the type of car. Is that, is it, is that something that you guys utilize or?
Um, no, there was a lot of, uh, wrong information in there. Um, it was, uh, I think it was more of an opinion based. Um, the only thing that the cameras pick up are license plates. And, uh, we can search by description of vehicles, so we can search by truck, car, minivan, we can put in a color. So maybe we don't have a plate, we have a description of a vehicle. It might give us thousands of vehicles to kind of look at and see, but the most accurate is going to be the plate. Uh, it doesn't show, you have a facial recognition, usually can't see a driver unless it's convertible or a motorcycle. So it's really just public information that's out there, which is the license plates.
It seemed like a pretty effective system. Um, I, I, I've asked this of a number of officers, they all like the, like the program. Um, the part that I don't like about the program is when I read about what you did and then, but no, no one was apprehended. And that happened like four of, of eight calls, probably four of them, nobody, nobody got busted.
Right. Now, there are some situations where that does happen. Um, sometimes we might get a stolen vehicle, it is common sometimes where a person has their plate stolen. So it is entered in the NCIC as a stolen plate. The MVD will issue them a new plate and they make a mistake and they issue them the same number. Well, that number is going to be now showing up as a stolen plate still. And so we'll end up stopping that vehicle and use it for private education, okay, your plate's still, you know, or it's stolen, you can use your plate, because we have to keep it in the system for the other person that did steal that plate. So there are some mishaps, there are only mishaps, that's something that even without the block, if we were to run that vehicle, we would still end up stopping that vehicle and doing the same thing. The block just alerts us to that a little bit quicker to let them know that their plate needs to be changed out.
Well, thank you for everything you guys do, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Actually, just, just as, uh, just as an add-on, so last week, I believe there was a car going about eighty miles an hour down Bird Lane and my next door neighbor happened to be walking, and she went out to go slow down. And she thought enough to call Avondale and your dispatcher said, "Where are you?" Because in fact, you had gotten an alert, but they didn't know where the car was. So I just wanted to go on record to say to our community members, "Call the police, we may not find them unless you..." And so they did, I mean, within seconds, they were there and, and, um, I, I think that's coming up next, the, the next report. But she called and that's how they found him. So I don't know, otherwise, you would have, at eighty miles an hour down Bird Lane, you might have made it out of the wall. But anyway, um, that made, that made a difference when that citizen made that call, so.
This just shows how effective the speedboats are.
Well, they, but, but they were. And now I'm thinking, maybe they lost an axle or, I don't know, whatever.
We have some pretty good success stories with the flock, but don't really go, like, a little unnoticed because we'll have a crime, we had one this past month, that, uh, an air compressor got stolen out of the resident's garage. But they, they knew the person, they know them for five years, they can positively identify them. Um, but we couldn't identify them. It wasn't good enough picture, but they said they knew by the way they walked. But they, the vehicle that was in there, we were able to run that vehicle through block and we could identify the vehicle. And then we talked to the person, told them, yeah, the evidence that we had, he agreed to return the compressor. Then the person didn't press charges, so there was no rest, because they got the compressor back. But in the end, we still were able to get the victim, the property back, and just decided not to press charges. So we got a lot of things like that as well, that assist that go unnoticed at times, so.
That's good. That's good, Mayor. I think it's important that everyone knows that the, uh, what you mentioned, that the cameras are picked from license plates. This article in the, uh, paper seemed to, uh, hit all kinds of privacy concerns and stuff and, you know, just taking pictures of license plates, uh, unless you're violating some whole lot of privacy rights and issues. There was also some inference in that article that anybody can go on the internet and see everything the block cameras are doing. We've not been able to give them any access and they started, we've been told. Do you know anything about that?
That's fair, that's, that's not right information either. The block cameras only, we have access to it and only the police have access to it. So the city officials don't have access to it, only we have access, and only certain officers, the officers, the sign language department have access to it. When we utilize the system, that whenever we search for a vehicle, we can't just do a random search. We have to actually put a reason in there, so we'll use a VR number. So any search that we do is connected to an important number of documents why we did that search. So there's no just random searches even by the officers. Now, a lot of cities do share block cameras. So for instance, if I got a S block cameras, Glendale has a block cameras. And they allow us access to see those cameras when we hit you for a vehicle. But Litchfield Parkers not allow access to other cities to see their cameras.
Yeah, I, I would encourage everybody to read the article and if you have questions, because I think there's a lot of this information in those.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate your service.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you mind if I comment on the block article, sir?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, staff read that too, and we have prepared a response to that article as Sergeant Emmett said, there are so many things in that article that just aren't true. And other cities are asking too, because we're not the only, we're not the only city that has block, multiple other cities have block. And we will be issuing a response to that and addressing the issue by issue, because there's just so many things in there that aren't true. And, um, you'll see in my response, in my opinion, the article is a smear on block and it's a smear on our NYPD and they do a great job. And we will be responding to it. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Going on to the staff reports, our first report is from Ms. Peterson on the finances.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the finance report through April, which is eighty-three percent through the fiscal year. Um, we'll start with sales tax. Um, for the month of April, we had a six percent increase over April of last year. Um, construction sales tax had an increase of thirty-seven percent. Um, year to date, um, sales tax is up twelve percent. Construction sales tax is down thirty-seven percent over last year, however, that's still seven percent over, um, our budget estimate. Um, so we're still doing better than we had anticipated. And that's all I have for sales tax, unless there's any questions. For the, uh, full finance report, our, um, total general fund revenue through the end of April is just over twelve point five million, which is ninety-five percent of our budget estimate. So we're twelve percent higher. If you look at, we're at eighty-three percent of the year, we've already collected ninety-five percent of our budget. Our operations, we are at eight point three million or sixty-nine percent. So our net general fund is, our revenues collected are four point two million higher than expenses. Um, our one-time expenses, our capital expenses are just over three point eight million. So our net one-time, um, revenues over expenses is ten point three million, giving us an ending fund balance of twenty-four point seven million. Um, the next few pages are, um, direct and special events detail. I won't go through that unless there's any questions that is included in your packet. Next page, please. For our special revenue funds, our HERF revenue, um, we are coming in under budget. We're at four hundred and twenty-four thousand five thirty-four, which is only, um, seventy-eight percent of budget. Um, we have earned some interest income of just under sixteen thousand, so total revenue of four hundred and forty thousand. So far, we've spent four hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, that gives us an ending, uh, fund balance of just under one point two million. Our Litchfield Square expenses through the end of April are seven million three hundred and sixty thousand. And that brings our entire fund balance to twenty-seven point two million, with twenty-four point seven of that being in the general fund and eighteen point seven of that is in the unassigned fund balance. and eighteen point seven of that is in the unassigned fund balance. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions for council?
Mr. West, Mayor. Thank you. Page, some of the funds coming down from the state are collected over a year out, so you know they're going to be pretty much down to the dollar. Is HERF not that way?
It's not exactly that way, they did provide that estimate and it's just not...
It's only an estimate?
Mm-hmm.
How long, what's the, the length getting those funds at, if you can?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, we receive a monthly deposit. Um, I know sales taxes are two months lag. I'm assuming HERF is the same, but I can find out for sure.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next slide, the PGA North Plume update. If you report on the plume.
Mayor, members of council, uh, presentation on some updated information on the plume. Uh, I've shared a similar graphic, I just want to give an update based on what we're seeing. Uh, here's kind of the timeline of what the plume looked like, uh, starting in the nineties, and they were able to start drilling wells and monitor it. Uh, see a very drastic drag towards what is now Pebble Creek. Uh, continuous drag goes now towards Pebble Creek in the early two thousands. And then a kind of mushroom projection towards, uh, Litchfield Road and out towards, uh, the R and E Canal near Indian School. So, this is a continuation, uh, two thousand and ten, you can see this is a Indian School Road. Got a little bit closer and then, here, really close to the very tip before the extraction and injection wells where we started taking pole. Uh, that's kind of what I want to show with this graphic here, you can see the sheer number of, uh, obviously the area that we're often married with the Unidynamics site where the plume started, uh, just south of Van Duren, uh, where they have more monitoring and injection wells than you can even count. Uh, so these circular areas are extraction wells that pull the T C out and then treat it and re-inject it in other wells. So I want to kind of give an update we're at today and show that this is as of the fourth quarter and getting into the first quarter of this year. This is what the tip of the plume looks like and this is the worst case scenario, it was pre-two thousand and one. So as you can correct, see graphically, the plume is retreating to the south. It's like, and, uh, this was shared with us, uh, the PGA consultants and their projections, the next five, ten, and twenty years, based on their aggressive approach of what they're calling the, uh, plume collapse. Uh, as, what they, what they aren't showing is the, the kinetic action of them moving these wells basically inward. And that's kind of a reactive, as the plume contracts and collapses, they'll move the wells to different locations. They can't project out that far where those are going to be, but you can rest assured along this road, there'll be a few more wells being drilled throughout the next fifteen, twenty years. Uh, with that, if there are any questions, questions?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we watched this thing for a longer time, so if you don't know what's going on, too much with that plume was progressing up the Chillicothe, heading toward the Chillicothe Park, and then as it got, before it got to us, all the wells, uh, farmers were drawing down, uh, what is now the Pebble Creek area, it was causing that plume to fischer and head, head west toward Pebble Creek and on, continue north. As Pebble Creek developed, those wells went out of business, that plume went back to its natural path, heading north. And that's when we started getting concerned and hired consultants and started watching this, uh, and yelling at EPA and the C Q and everybody else who didn't follow this. And finally put pressure on the crane to start doing something. And, uh, the results have been fantastic. I mean, I never, I, I never expected to see this in my life, and maybe I won't see it, but, uh, in five and ten year, I expect to see it.
You're a forty-five, you're... Based on the feedback I'm getting from EPA and, uh, consultants, the plume's actually retreating a lot faster than they can, than their models are even showing. So it's, it, it makes me, I'm missing it a little bit more.
Yes, officer.
Councilor, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Keith, you know, if you drive, if you drive south on, uh, Litchfield Road, you'll notice where Unidynamics used to be, there's a big warehouse building, couple of them. How, 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 how does that, how does that happen? How did that occur? Because I know there were a number of processing developers that were, that were right there on the property. And, but now everything is hunky-dory.
So there was fourteen wells on the Unidynamics, uh, that, this one, right about, this is where Unidynamics is, right about here. Uh, where these, you see these little taluses. So that fourteen dry wells, they were dumping T C E, which is equivalent nowadays with like a brake cleaner, uh, in non-aerosol format. Uh, so they're dumping those in and based on, you know, what the vice mayor was saying, the, the well extraction with groundwater was pulling it north, that's why it was so far many miles. Uh, so the ground became, you couldn't grow anything on it, you couldn't build anything for the last twenty-plus years. And the day consultant and the developer got together and they remade, actually remediated the property of the Unidynamics parcel. Uh, and I lived in that area, I can tell for the last five to ten years, every once in a while, they were keep moving dirt, winnowing, letting the air out, more or less, kind of simplifying it, but it took a long time. When that happened, the EPA was able to grant them, uh, the, the ability to construct over it and not have any other contaminations in the area. So what isn't shown on the last graphic that I provided was how it's also kind of, the plume is heading north, also away from the Unidynamics parcel.
Uh-huh.
So it's, it's collapsing on itself. So on a federal level, the ground at the Unidynamics parcel was approved for construction. And then the city could hear, allow for that to happen.
Just kind of surprising, if, if the rest of the, so the landowner and the vice, it doesn't get in the chain, the, the cultivation chain, they never get right to the cops. They give exemption from the EPA.
Oh, okay.
So they can build the top of it, they can clean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Original guys are still male, everything on this one both, it's, it's, it's not any different than what Unidynamics has. Right, we just, but it was directly the top of, of where the Unidynamics was, and I know that there were, there were a row of wells or something that was, uh, over, over, where the...
They, uh, I, I, I saw a report from the nineties, somewhere in the nineties, where they backfilled those dry wells and they were able to prove that they were basically locked up and not a problem anymore. Uh, the, the, one thing to note is this is sub-unit A, which is a level of groundwater. Uh, if you go down to the Phoenix, uh, Goodyear Airport, there's A, B, and C. So this plume is A, there's no other T C heading north in this area, in any of the other sub-units that can be measured. So these ground wells, these extraction and injection wells are drilled into sub-unit A. So in between surface and the groundwater, that's where they measure, so they don't really measure too much in between the camp, that would be logistically impossible. So there's a chance that this plume in a much lighter color of green probably exists in that stratup, but it's in a position where it's not dangerous to the, to the, in sub-unit A.
How deep is the groundwater in the area that's still remaining, approximately?
So this, in, in the areas down here, in the, uh, it, it ranges, so we're, our well is about five hundred fifty-five feet of the Sierra Flake. And down in the area of the, uh, Phoenix Goodyear, it ranges between forty and I think a hundred eighty feet, because of how close it is to the Kewa River. That's why they have multiple stratup, uh, multiple levels of, of proximity. So it, it, the ground isn't linear, for me, there's kind of hard to explain, but it, it goes from about a couple hundred feet to five hundred feet in our area.
Most regions are higher than that.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for council? All right, thank you. We also approve, we report on the Temple Plume Dividers.
Yes, and I'll try to keep this short, and then we have about four hundred more pages of the agenda to go through. Sax Mark, as Captain Romag mentioned, is under construction, uh, CFP budget for that was two hundred and sixty-five thousand, contract amount was two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, as of now, we are approximately seventy-two percent complete with number of days, but, uh, there, you know, they're not complete until pavement work now, which is going to happen in the next two weeks, uh, with anticipation of project completion by May thirty-first. The Chillicothe Mill and Overlay, if anybody's been out there lately, it's done and construction is complete, other than final strapping, which will happen about the first week of June over the thermal, third, the thermal now, so it's a nice smooth ride if everybody's been out there. The other item is Southwest Valley Truck Study, not a CFP project, but the update is that MAG is currently, uh, putting, putting together the draft report to distribute to us. We are promised to get an advanced draft copy of that to review ahead of the other municipalities. Uh, so we'll review that information, report back to council and other members of management to digest what their conclusion might be. Upcoming CFP projects, I started Indian School Road reconstruction, uh, it's a summer project, we have, uh, budget's eight hundred thousand dollars with HERF money, that will be used for that project. And then Jacky Robinson Park, we have drainage improvements, estimated budget of forty thousand dollars. And that's it for CFP updates, if you have any questions.
Questions for council? Okay, thank you for your report. There was, in the packet, there is a report from the magistrate court of the docs, a series of documents, fifteen things, so we'll give you information. Just did this, oh, we're just, we're gonna do that right now. That's what the project's subject, object, it was yourself.
It is, cheers. Yes, I did. Speaking of magistrate, can we ask them, if they're going to continue to do this form, can they turn sideways so we can read it?
Yeah. We're gonna have a different, we're gonna have a different one, but all of it, just, just as a matter of, though it would be helpful if, if we were scanning them, we can get them all pointing in the same direction. Uh, that's, you got any to come around and say?
Mr. Scout?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, to start out with Litchfield Square, the Avondale Officer mentioned a motorcycle accident happened on April sixteenth. We just got the estimate of repair costs for that at thirteen thousand dollars plus or less. Um, Village Parkway extension to Desert Avenue, uh, they're currently finishing up the decorative concrete at the intersections along with the tree glades and landscaping, all of the landscaping on Village Parkway is nearly complete. Uh, currently installing foundations for wayfinding signs and other signs in that, uh, that stretch of Village Parkway. And we're currently planning for the final lift of pavement to be done on June fourteenth. Uh, the airline canal relocation project, I told you in the past, is complete, it's finished, but we're just still waiting for GDM to sign the new easements and the old abandonment, easement abandonment documents, so we can get those recorded. Uh, they'll go on in two and a half months now, so I keep sending them around, reminding them, we think they want to get those, uh, recorded. Um, Southwest Gas has now completed all the work for the new gas system within Litchfield Square. Uh, we're waiting for Liberty Utilities to respond to our request to turn over the water and sewer systems to them, that's now two months into that request. Um, and then on GMP five, uh, we're currently installing all of the irrigation sleeves under all the paved surfaces. And gearing up for all of the curving gutter on the Loam on Desert Avenue, which we've done, uh, they started within the next couple of weeks. And the big one is, um, Honeysuckle Reconstruction, and that's complete reconstruction of Honeysuckle Street between Desert Avenue and Old Litchfield Road, that's going to start on June nineteenth. Uh, part of it, we have an item on the agenda tonight about closure, part of it will be closed, the north app will be done starting on June nineteenth, then the south app, um, work will start, and the street will have to be closed, uh, for that period of time from after the Fourth of July until the end of August. And we're having a stakeholder meeting, uh, with businesses that will be affected by that on June seventh. Uh, the downtown storm drain project is wrapping up. Uh, all the work on Fairway Drive and Yoman Avenue is complete. On Old Litchfield Road, you can see that the contractor's working way up to the north end, so they're getting close to the end of that one. Um, they're able to plate the trenches every night to, to allow two-way traffic, otherwise it would have, they have that automatic signal replyers. They're, they're using players every day. And then the company, the work coming up, um, will be for the catch facings and the connector pipes north of Honeysuckle on the west side of the street. So that's in front of the church and up north Fairway. And then the last thing to be done, um, is the Mill and Overlay of the northbound side of Litchfield Road and all that work that's, all the sort of all the work that's done. We are still working on the underpass pump station, they're currently installing that equipment and the electrical system. Um, all of the work should be done around the end of June, it should be about two months ahead of schedule. And then we can send the invoice, the flip application for the remainder of their share. And then we are still working with FEMA to process the plume, our FEMA has ended their second six-month review, uh, period for this, I don't know why it's taken so long, but, um, FEMA just takes a long time to get things done. So that eventually will wrap up, and then that flip plane, that FEMA flip plane, that's located in that area, which affects one house at, uh, um, in addition to the Scott Lodge area, that will go away, that flip plane will be, uh, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Councilor Claire.
On the, the Honeysuckle closing, what do you have, we've already had dates set up, we got a stakeholder meeting on the seventh, that's a week before, ten days before the actual closure. Have we notified all the businesses in advance of the stakeholder meeting?
Yes, we do, uh, what we're doing is sending out a notice to all the businesses, including the resort and, you know, all the school districts and, you know, the post office, everybody, uh, to let them know that that street will be under construction. But we're targeting, uh, just the businesses that are directly affected by the closure of Old Litchfield Road from the state one man.
But have we already notified them, or is that something that's been happening?
Uh, it's coming out in the next year or so, later, later this week it should be out.
Okay.
Please get it out before we're asked. What I'd be on this.
I'm sorry.
Please, please get it out before we...
Perhaps.
Before we ask, before we eat up.
Get it out as soon as we can.
Yeah, I just think as soon as we have dates, that we should be notified, uh, or notifying that the business holders in the area, as soon as we know, we've got something that we're putting out, we can let them have an idea of what's happening, even if it takes a little bit of time, then please prepare. Thank you.
Any other questions for council? Okay, then your report. Thanks to Stuart, excuse me, your consent agenda, I'm nine A to H. Is there anyone in the council that'd like to take anything off of the consent agenda? If not, it's an emergency adopt, we consent agenda, I'm nine A to H. Sir, second. I was a terrorist, I, I, we both, our consent agenda is adopted as we said. Now our business agenda, I'm ten A to the contract with Waste Management for supplement fees on the place, Mr. Man, yeah, Mr. Williams. Mr. Man, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'll answer either one, thank you, sir. Um, Mayor and Council tonight, of course, we did the updates on the Waste Management Agreement. You may remember we discussed this last month, just for a quick overview, of course, we did the RFP for Garbage Services last fall, and we did receive one bid from Waste Management. That being said, we've been going back and forth over some language the last few months, and we do have, of course, Park Laney was here with us tonight to discuss that. and we do have, of course, Clark Laney was here with us tonight to discuss that agreement. If this agreement is approved, it would begin July the first, two thousand twenty-three. Again, the current agreement does expire on June thirtieth, so, of course, we're running out of time here. That being said, there was a concern about city citizens not knowing about coming changes, so we, city staff is planning to send out a mailer to all the rooftops in the city, as well as Waste Management, to let them know about program changes such as cost increases, bolt pick-up, et cetera. So we do our best to cover that base, and also on social media as well. Again, this agreement in place, so it's a five-year term with two automatic renewals, which you do those, so the five-year term, of course, will be through two thousand twenty-eight. I'm not going to go over the agreement as a whole, but relative to specific language. There were several concerns that you'll see in the document, we did put the red line document in your package that you'll see, where we tried to address those specific concerns. For example, one of those would be if the customer chose to switch over from in-ground service to rolling can service, that Waste Management would provide them cans free of charge for doing that conversion, that is in the document. Also, that if a citizen chose to have two garbage cans instead of one garbage can and one recycling can, they could do that. That is also in the document. We tried to do our best to cover those various changes and list them in here. It's also in there that nonprofits can do recycling if they choose to do so. I don't know if nonprofits still do that, but it is in there if they choose to do so. The biggest sticking point, of course, was on extraordinary rate calls. We went back and forth a good bit on that, and long story short, we came to an agreement on that with Waste Management, that Waste Management could, could request an extraordinary rate increase from City Council once every twelve months, but the City Council did have the right to refuse it. That being said, if the city does refuse that extraordinary rate increase, Waste Management reserves the right to cancel our contract with a hundred and eighty days' notice. I think that's a fair point for both parties. We have to be able to consider to say no extraordinary rate increase, and we certainly hope it wouldn't come to that, but if it did, of course, we would go out for another RFP and go down that road. So I think that's a balance between the parties. Clark, is there anything you'd like to say on that as far as extraordinary rate increase or other language?
No, I, I would be remiss to say that you said increases, there's, that the decrease is as well as the majority of the citizens.
Thank you, sir. Um, just as far as what Clark is saying on that, so you may remember in the past that rolling can service has been subsidizing in-ground can service, because it costs much more to service in-ground cans, because it takes about three times as long to service an in-ground customer as it does a rolling can customer, because the in-ground customer requires an employee to get off the truck, they have to get out, get the bags, et cetera, where most cans these days are automated. So there is a cost there within that. And for that reason, starting July one, again, assuming the contract is approved, rolling can service will actually be about a dollar cheaper than it is today, while in-ground customers will be about twenty dollars a month more than they are today. And again, the reason why, for years, rolling can customers have been subsidizing in-ground customers. That being said, only about twelve percent of the city citizens have in-ground service. That's obviously an overview. Other question? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, so Matthew, when that customer gets that bill and it's twenty dollars more, and then he calls and says, I don't want in-ground anymore, what happens there?
Then Waste Management will take them cans, and they'll become rolling can customers.
Okay.
And they'll pay the cheaper rate.
Gotcha. And then, fast forward, I'm hoping we'll have a cheap, cheap FAQ, frequently asked question sheet that will be front and center on our website and so forth. But I'm thinking about all of us who, who don't have the trash cans right now, so, well, how do we get rid of our old ones, and blah, blah, blah. It's gonna be question, 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 so will we have something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll have that FAQ page, like you said, that we'll put on social media. And also, we're already working on a mailer for that to come out from the city, and Waste Management will do the same thing, let people know. That being said, there will still be a lot of questions, there's always, always something like this.
And I think that would be a really good time when we, when, I know we're working on our website and cleaning that up, but especially to get all the old off and put the new on, because we still are all going to the website to find that info, and it's, you know, outdated, but the update will be huge.
Yes, ma'am, I would agree. Other questions on agreement changes? Councilman Roebig?
Thank you. Roger, did you want to say something about this?
About this.
About this. Okay.
Oh.
We live in, we live in an area called Peninsula, and there's fifty-one units there. Of those fifty-one units, I bet more than forty of them have used in-ground can, right? And it's, uh, I, I for one have two in-ground cans that I don't use. I don't like them, and somebody's gonna get hurt, probably me. And I, I just haven't used them, but I, I want to know that there's gonna be a way for me to have the lower rate, because I'm not using in-ground cans, but how do you know, as long as I got the in-ground cans, whether I'm using them or not? You don't know. You being the stakeholder.
Clark, do you mind if I put my address in that question, sir?
Sure, what do you want us to do? Do? And a trash can, do you?
Yeah, trash can, or even a rolling can, though.
Yeah, but, but they don't know that, but they, so they're gonna have to put the guy in the back of the truck anyway. Why? Because not everybody is gonna do the, the.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have a guy in the back of the truck to do both in-ground cans and rolling cans, pick them up at the same time?
No, no.
There's a problem.
Well, I understand that, but you still gotta, they're still gonna bring someone through with a guy on the back of the truck, because not everybody is gonna change over to the, the cheaper, you know, system. There's too many, there's.
No, that is correct, we will still ride a, a truck and have somebody hanging off, you know, right on the back, you know, at the time, until, you know, whether it's one or two hundred, that still will be in place, because there will be residents that will opt to choose to use or continue with the, a week of the valley green grant service of that, so.
Right, how are you gonna know whose, whose, who'll be which?
Well, if there's a car.
Different color, or?
Now, Council, if there's a car down at the curb, we bring an automated truck to the dumps and sets it back down.
Okay.
Okay, the, the other one is, where we have addresses where there's in-ground, then they stop, and they maneuver up and they get the trash out, the, the in-ground cans.
Will you give the people who have in-ground the opportunity to switch before the increase?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
They're gonna have a list of, like I said, a list of addresses for, 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 for.
Yeah, so we do now, yeah.
So that's up the low. We'll be on the list.
And I can attest that they.
You're on the list, Councilwoman Roebig, enough of that.
I can attest that they have a pretty good system of keeping track of who has each cans, because my neighbor, when I lived over in neither Conde complex, let us borrow her trash can once, because we had a lot of stuff, and she was uptown. And I got a, a letter from you guys reminding us that it wasn't our trash can, so. So they are top of the, they keep their track of it.
Okay, any other questions, Council? Mr. White, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's gonna be a little changeover process here that we probably all need to be ready for, but it seems to be a fair situation where those with the rolling cans are not subsidizing while those with the ones in the ground. It's, it's a fair situation. And I want to thank the staff and Council, let me back to my high horse and some of the terms of this contract, but I think it's been worked out now, and with that, I would make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All is a favor of approving the contract with Waste Management with the Signify of a Say Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Next item is consideration of a resolution concerning Litchfield Square upon Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, Council, there are sections, several items on this, of course, we do have a presentation tonight, this was on the bond. We also have multiple documents that go along with this. So you will be considering approval resolution twenty-three five forty-nine tonight, that does approve the bond sale. It also approves the third purchase agreement, the third trust agreement, the bond segment, and the obligation purchase agreement. So I just want to be clear that it's approving multiple documents as part of this process. Also, of course, we do have Mr. Markere here with us tonight, he's gonna, he's gonna talk about our bond. And we also have, uh, Mr. Paul is, we have Mr. Paul Gales, he's here, our bond council is here with us as well, he has specific questions as far as the levers of the bond. As you, Markere's in here, since we have questions. And that being said, I'm gonna turn this presentation up a page.
Thank you, Matthew. Um, Mayor and Council, at last month's study session, we looked at multiple different scenarios, multiple amounts, and different bond terms, and we landed on eleven point five million with a twenty-year term. This will, these proceeds will help, um, help us complete Litchfield Square. Um, if we do move forward with this, the closing will be in June sometime. We are looking at possibly doing first two years as interest-only payments. Um, this financing is to be funded with tax-exempt bonds. Um, this is just preliminary, it is subject to change, and it will depend on the day of the sale. Um, but right now, the all-in true interest cost is estimated at three point eight-six percent. Um, the average annual debt service is just over eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, and the max debt service is just over eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. With that, I am happy to answer any questions, or if there's more technical questions, Mr. Reeder's here, and Mr. Gales are here to help us with that.
So questions, Council? We've gone through this in some details in our work study session. And Markere's here to make sure that if there are any questions, we will go through as much detail as necessary, so everyone has an opportunity to feel comfortable with what we're proposing to do. I don't know, if you need a motion of open discussion, we can have a, if we have discussion now on that, if you need a motion to adopt, and after we have a motion to adopt, we don't have any further discussion happening. If you'd like to make a motion to adopt, if we can have a second.
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three five forty-nine, approving the sale, execution of delivery pledge revenue bond, Series Two of two thousand twenty-three, approving the form, authorizing execution of necessary agreements, instruments, and documents, demoting authority to determine certain matters with respect to the foregoing, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Second for the motion?
Second. Second.
Any further discussion, I'm looking, Council, all right.
Do we know that this is gonna be our last shot as well? You know, I, I wonder, we can't keep going back and back. Who gave us the number, how, how do we know that eleven, or, yeah, eleven point five is adequate?
Yeah, we have, but we have an updated budget for the majority of our items in Litchfield Square. We use that budget in terms of how much is left to be spent, and we compared that against the amount of money that we now have in reserves, plus this eleven point five million. The conclusion was that that was sufficient to finish the square, and not end up wanting more than what we needed. It uses some of our reserve money, it's this month. So the estimate comes from our special project manager, and hopefully it's a good, solid estimate. I know he believes it is, so we, yeah, we'll work with that estimate as our best, as our best guidepost.
There was an article in the Independent also regarding the, uh, this, what we're doing right now. In the Independent, we talked about the, uh, that we're forty percent off on our, on the, on the original estimate.
We went from, we went from twenty million to thirty million?
Twenty-six to forty. Twenty-six to four. Combination of completion and dishead.
Okay, I, I just want to be sure that we get out that this is, that we don't need to cut, this, we have adequate funds now, A, to complete the project, and B, to fund the interest and, you know, that goes forward. And it's important that the community know that.
Yes, ma'am. We're through the, basically through the whole design process, so we know we're gonna be building. So that's, that's why we're.
Okay, I just want the community to know that, too, because when you get articles like this, and, just like with the, uh, the police report on the flop camps, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and we don't need it coming from us. We need to ensure that they have all the information that we have.
Right, and I, I think as we went through during the work study, we, we have enough reserves, probably, to finish the building that we have to build, but the power is in our reserves, it's very low, if the Fed is sold to some sort of recession, because the, the Fed, the federal, the feds keep tightening interest rates to the point where our economy just shuts down a little bit, or we miss it, we miss the debt service, maybe because they can't, they can't agree for debt ceiling, or any one of the houses, other things that could affect this economy in the next year or so. And what we're trying to do is to take a very conservative approach and make sure that we have funds so we can finish that, that building, so we have something we can sell. So it is a, you know, it is a judgment that we went through, I think it's on video, but all, no, all the numbers fit together, basically.
I want to be sure that everybody is look clear.
Yeah, I hope that, I, I hope everybody is gonna.
Just here, I mean, oh, the community.
Well, the community, yeah, if they have gotten, unless they go back for a minutes, then I can see all the different things we discussed in the work study.
It's true.
Any other questions, Council? All right. The motion on the floor to adopt that resolution twenty-three dash five forty-nine, all is available, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, and the resolution is adopted. Next item is.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry, sir.
Good job, good job.
Thanks for having me.
Your money has gone.
Good night.
Good night. Next item is adoption of resolution twenty-three dash five fifty concerning Valley Metro, intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Williams.
Mayor and Council, this is the, I'm sorry, one second. Got a foot photo for attachments from the bond. Next up is resolution twenty-three five fifty in the IGA with Valley Metro. In short, this item is to bring the Ride, the Ride Choice program to Litchfield Park, and we'll cover some of the various things with this. Again, please, on my email on IGA, we did have some language of IGA on this literally yesterday, but there's some funding we want to use for this, so you'll see those changes, so that's why you got the document today, just to clarify that. All right, this is my, I'd like to welcome Mr. Tom Young. Tom Young is here with us in Valley Metro, and he is gonna begin this presentation, then I'll take it over from him at a certain point, so. Tom, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, Matthew. Let's see if I can reach the mic there. Um, Mayor, Emery to the Council, as Matthew said, my name's Tom Young. I'm the manager of Accessible Transit Services at Valley Metro. Tonight, I'm a brief view on Valley Metro's transportation services for people with disabilities and senior citizens. So quickly, Valley Metro provides door-to-door transportation for people with disabilities called paratransit. The programs required under the Americans with Disabilities Act, in areas of the county, we provide regular fixed route or light rail service. The service is highly regulated, and its minimum requirement of the ADA to provide service in all areas three-quarters of a mile from the regular fixed route bus. The ADA also defined criteria that makes people eligible for that service. So as you can see, oh, go back one, yeah, as you can see from this map, there is actually fixed route service south, east, and north of Litchfield Park. However, there's nothing that comes close enough to the city that would require the ADA paratransit service to be provided. So there's several areas of the county that have the same circumstances here. And so, due to that fact, Valley Metro did implement a program called Ride Choice. So Ride Choice does not come with the requirements as the federal ADA paratransit program comes with. So it, it offers a lot of flexibility. Next slide. So what is Ride Choice? Ride Choice is actually a demand response service that provides mobility for people with disabilities and senior citizens. And in some of the communities, they've decided that they also want to provide some of the service for low, certain low-income individuals and certain veterans. So like I said, lots of flexibility. We broker trips to community providers such as Uber, Lyft, and other companies that actually have accessible vehicles for people that need to use assistive devices. Currently, we have seventeen providers that we can use throughout the county, and thirteen actually have accessible vehicles. So we have a hundred and twenty-nine accessible vehicles available for people who use wheelchairs and other assistive devices. So what's the program about? So individuals that are determined eligible for the program, we have several options for them. The base option is individuals can be allocated twenty trips per month that they can take. They pay a three dollar fare for trips that are up to eight miles. And then any trip that's longer than eight miles, the individual actually pays two dollars a mile, broke out by a quarter mile. Individuals that have routine medical appointments, employment trips, or school, we can move up to an allocation of fifty trips per month. The same rules apply with the fifty trips of its, of three dollar fare for trips up to eight miles. Anything over the eight miles, um, the individual pays two dollars per mile. Once the trip allocation, looking at either twenty or fifty trips, once that allocation is gone during a month, the individual cannot use the service for the following month. And if they're unused trips in any given month, they do not roll over to the next month. We do have one other plan that we implemented, and it's a mileage plan. Uh, we did find out initially when we implemented the program, there were several individuals that traveled fifteen, twenty miles to, and, and primary it was to dialysis appointments. And, and truly the cost of two dollars per mile plus a three dollar was a burden to them. So we implemented a, a four hundred mile program where individuals can travel up to four hundred miles in a month. The total limit or length of a trip one way can be fifty miles, and there's only that three dollar fare. For all of the programs, travel is restricted to Mariposa County only. So a person cannot use the Ride Choice program to go out of town. As I said earlier, the flexibility of this allows each community to choose who they want to be eligible for the program, um, which once again adds some, uh, flexibility of this. So quickly, that's, that's a, a quick briefing of what the program is. I can pass this back to you, Matthew, and, and before you, uh, the closing, and then I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Um, one point I was about to hit on again, as Tom said in those first couple of slides, is that because there is no existing route service within three quarter mile of city limits, we are not required to provide service. That's a frequent question we get. People assume that cities are required to provide paratransit service, and we are not. Because there's not one within three quarter mile of service. So that, of course, why we showed that, just to be clear on that point.
Okay.
Um, that being said, the Ride Choice program is a great option. Next slide, please.
Oh, I forgot this one here.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so just kind of give some background. Um, we do have individuals from, uh, the city that have applied for ADA eligibility. On our files, we actually have nine individuals that are already eligible. However, since there isn't any service here, um, they have to actually travel into the service area to act, to get access to the ADA paratransit. Today, we have one active person that actually has arranged their own transportation to get into the service area within Goodyear, and then they use the, the paratransit program at that point. Um, I just kind of had some history. Uh, when Avondale had their Zoom service above, uh, I-ten, that three quarter mile did come a little bit into the city, so we had users prior to that. Um, but that service is, is no longer in existence, so it has gone away.
Okay, Tom. Next slide, please. Mayor and council, overview of this program. We would offer a one-year Ride Choice pilot program for people in the city. And we would be only opening that up for people that are determined to be ADA eligible with disabilities and senior sixty-five and over. To be eligible for this program, there are documents that you have to complete to recall, to use Ride Choice. You can't just call and start using it. You have to get set up. For the most part, you actually have to go down to Valley Metro to sign up for this program. Obviously, if people are a certain level of disability, there's other ways of doing that.
Okay.
It's not traditional bus line or van services in larger cities, but rather it's contracted standard sized vehicles, as you saw in the picture. For example, vans you would see with Uber or Lyft. So you won't see big buses on our streets because of this program. But again, regular sized vehicles with handicap lifts, that sort of thing. It will be very similar to the Tolleson model. The Tolleson model, they currently average four point eight riders per month at a city cost of fifteen hundred and sixty dollars a month. That being said, as you'll see, those four point eight people actually had eighty-one rides in a month. So these seven people are using the bus ten, twelve times a month as they go to doctor's appointments, various things. So it's a small group of people that use it, but the people that do use it, use it a lot.
Okay.
At current projections, that would cost the city twenty-three thousand dollars annually. Again, it's projection because we've never had this program. Um, that being said, we also have seventeen thousand three hundred dollars in what we call ALF funds. ALF funds are otherwise known as Arizona Lottery Funds. And we could put a hundred percent of those funds toward this expense of twenty-three thousand dollars, leaving us owing about six thousand. And of course, what this money is, this subsidizes the program so the riders don't pay as much to use it. We're basically paying to subsidize it, and we would pay quarterly. And then at the end of the fiscal year, if we owed money back, if they didn't use all the money, then we actually get those monies back. Next slide, please. This is to show you comparisons of cities. So the bigger cities use this too. The bigger cities also use bus service. To give you a comparison, two of our West Valley neighbors spend over eight hundred thousand dollars a year on buses. Obviously, we're not suggesting we do that here, okay? But they offer Ride Choice as well. For example, the city of Goodyear averaged twenty-five thousand a month in July and February for ride share. Avondale nine eight hundred a month, Tolleson again fifteen hundred and sixty a month, Surprise fifty-nine thousand. The reason why Surprise has so much figures is because they offer their, they open, there's up to a lot more riders. Obviously, more riders, more cost. But we think we will be pretty close to the Tolleson model based off that our population is very close to Tolleson. Again, it's a pilot program for one year. If we found it was too expensive, we could certainly revisit that a year from now. Next slide, please. That's it presentation wise. In the package tonight, again, we do have a resolution, we have the IGA. One thing I would ask you on IGA, if you would like to make a motion, is that we would like to strike Section four point five from that IGA. And the reason why is four point five is the transit lifecycle program, and that's where other cities can use it to get money for buses. Obviously, we don't have buses, so we don't need money for that program. So we would strike Section four point five, again, if you decide to go forward with this. Tom, is there anything you'd like to add in this presentation, sir?
The only thing that I'd like to add at this time is it was funny because I got here and I sat down and I felt my phone vibrate, and it was one of our customer service representatives who just got a call from a city customer asking if there were any services available, transportation services available, um, for people with disabilities that live out in Litchfield Park. So I, the timing of this was very interesting. The program itself has been very popular. Um, I do know, and I'm on anticipated question and answer it before it's asked, several areas of this county, we have a lot of, um, assisted living facilities that have transportation that they provide themselves. And there's always a fear of you put in this type of service and they're gonna, what we call in the industry, shed their responsibility onto, um, what'll end up being the city that pays for this. I can tell you that my experience, I mean, anything's possible, but my experience, especially with the Ride Choice program, this is based off individuals' trips. And we don't cater to group trips or outings and that type of thing. One of the pieces, especially with assisted living, typically they have a staff person that'll go to doctor's appointments, their vehicle leaves till they're done, and then takes them back. For the Ride Choice program, it's transportation period. We're going to pick somebody up, we're going to get them to their destination. The vehicle leaves until they're ready, they can call, come back, and get another trip. So, um, I, I have not seen, especially in Mariposa County, the larger agencies getting rid of their vehicles just to use this program.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you addressing that. Um, I would agree with what he says, the people that do need this program. In the last few months, I've met with several individuals that have people in their family that need this service. Um, one of them has multiple citizens in their home that have ADA disability issues, that have trouble getting places they need to go for obvious reasons. I also know of another gentleman that, that is blind, that's cross, that's crossing Camelback. So that's, that's all I'm going to say on that anyway. Um, I, sir? Thank you for being here, sir.
I appreciate it, man.
Yes, sir. I've never, I've talked to you on the phone multiple times, but I've never actually met you in person, so thank you for coming.
I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, any questions on the IGA?
I have a quick question. Um, do drivers have the skill and ability to help people transfer who don't have the ability to transfer on their own?
Yes, we, we do have a requirement in the contract that certain training has to be done. Um, however, one of the reasons we have so many companies that have accessible vehicles is so that we can bring vehicles that have lifts and or ramps, so people do not have to transfer.
So they can stay in the chair?
They can stay in their chair, and there's securement devices within the vehicle.
So what about, um, like in a situation, my mother had a caretaker that didn't drive, but she would have needed her at the doctor's appointment. Can they come with their, their assistant?
Yes, that's a great question. We do allow, um, an escort or an assistant to travel with the individual. It's at no extra cost. Um, depending on the vehicle that's there, they could go up to two people traveling with them, but we try to limit it to one.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just want to say it's fabulous. I, I, I'm really proud of our, our community that this is a possibility to offer this. I think it's awesome.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I come here. Nancy, you and I just discussed this.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard some discussions sort of promoted, but what keeps our two most, um, businesses who use our fire services to the extreme from determining, from getting all of their customers eligible and trying to move them, a hundred people a day?
So several things, Mr. Vice Mayor. One, it's not set up for group service.
You can't have that groups, they do it one at a time, they just, they, one at a time, they all go to Walmart.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, for a one at a time, so they could, they could use it for medical appointments. One thing there is they can't stay. The driver can't stay and wait for the person doing the appointment, have their appointment and come back. They can't just sit and wait for them. But as Councilman Allen just asked, of course, they could have family and come with them if they wanted to. They could do that. Um, I would tell you that the businesses you're speaking of build that service into their profit margin. It is an amenity. My understanding, they do make money on offering that service, I'll say that.
They don't charge extra for it on top of a base fee, do they?
No, sir, they don't.
It's built into their base fee.
That's correct, sir.
So they can get rid of that expense.
Yes, sir, they sure could.
Then their bottom line is better.
Yes, it would be.
So they have all kinds of motivation to.
Yes, sir, they would.
Maximize the use of this service.
They, they could certainly do that.
But doesn't there, don't they have to qualify? Is there a financial side and, you know?
They, they don't have to qualify, use it financially, Councilor Don, here. They just have to be sixty-five and over or have ADA disabilities.
Which is everybody and the rest? Yeah. I, 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 I have some concerns I still not comfortable with. One, it's a pilot program, and pilot programs never seem to go away. They always turn into permanent programs, no matter how expensive they end up being.
Usually it is, sir.
Two, you advertise it is only costing six thousand dollars, in effect, it costs twenty-seven odd thousand. That money, that ALF money, we, we could use for something else. So.
That's right.
Have a look at the real numbers that are in there, which are starting now over twenty thousand.
Twenty-three thousand, yes, sir.
Yeah, it could easily, if this is picked up by our two fire service users, uh, could, could escalate. That, that concerns me. Uh, trying to compare it to the city of Tolleson, uh, did we figure out if they have any restaurants in Tolleson?
That, that I don't know, Tom, do you know, sir?
Yes, they do have a couple, uh, residential facilities in Tolleson, and we have not seen that shift from those facilities and gone to us. We, if I can add one other piece of information, we track, we track everything. If you want to see data, we, we track everything. We can monitor the addresses of the facilities at this point. And if in fact we start seeing a pattern, I can immediately get a hold of the staff and say, this is what we're seeing, and bring any negative trends forward also.
Do you, do you track these addresses by zip code, or do we know they're going to be inside Litchfield Park?
Since we provide service to individuals, we track everything by individual and their pickup address. So if we start seeing a lot of people from the same pickup address, that would be a red flag.
But, but you're picking up from the address with the zip code, you're going to be getting an area a hundred times larger than the city of Litchfield Park?
It's the actual street address that we ask, not the zip code.
Tom, to the Vice Mayor's concern, I don't know if we could do this, but would there be a way to say that we can only pick up individuals from residences, not businesses? You follow me?
I do follow you, and with the flexibility of this program, I'm going to say if you could make that decision at this point, um, I would sit here and kind of refer this mortal needle at this point. Does it open you up for potential discrimination?
Yes, sir, I bring them up with my, for, that's what I ask, if it was possible.
My, my, my last question is, is this, we've got an issue with group homes. Is this promoting group homes somehow? Are we providing service to them now? Or we're trying to maybe regulate them somehow? Are we encouraging them?
I'm thinking about what to say there.
Yeah. I don't, I couldn't figure out the right way to ask the question, so I'm like.
Mr. Vice Mayor, considering the, the group home residents that I'm currently aware of, they would not be able to, under the conditions that we're looking to establish this for.
Age, ADA? ADA? Everybody in there is probably ADA?
Um, the, the, the one you're concerned about, sir, I don't believe in the criteria, I'll say that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm finching, sir.
Matthew, I, I can offer one other piece of this. And I, I could actually talk about the ADA eligibility process for hours because it's so complicated. But in short, what that eligibility process does is number one, establish that disability exists. But the biggest piece of it is looking at how does an individual function with that disability? So if an individual has, in, in our testar, even though you don't have a bus out here, our testar is that they have the functional ability to walk to, get on a bus, get off a bus, identify their destination independently. If a person with a disability can do all of those things, they're not going to be ADA eligible. So it's not the existence of a disability, it's how does that person function with the disability? So that right there, you know, really narrows down the number of people that will be eligible based on the disability.
Uh, my wife has a group home. And, and that group home, they are, um, not ADA, they're not, false ADA. Uh, but they are, they do need a ride from the Avondale, but they're not sixty-five. So they, they don't meet the criteria for this disability at all. It would be more Uber or something like that.
It's, it's, they don't have to be ADA for over sixty-five. Sixty-five is just cut off in your alone.
Correct, that's what we've discussed it this time.
Any other questions, Councilor Quayle?
So the, is the, the total ride count start from the rider's origin address or where they're placing living? So if they're driving to Walmart in Avondale, ride back from Walmart in Litchfield, is going to come back into Litchfield account?
It's two trips.
Two trips.
It's two trips, and the jurisdiction responsible is the home jurisdiction. So you would have the trip going to, the Avondale Walmart is one, and the return would be two.
So make sure that that rider does, and the residents is going to be able to follow her.
Correct.
Any other questions, Councilor Quayle? Is there a motion to, um, adopt Resolution twenty-three dash five fifty approving, uh, your government agreement with Litchfield Public Transportation Ability for Granted Services? adopt Resolution 23-550 approving regular living room and outdoor public transportation ability for granted services? That's presenting the packet tonight. Is there a second? Is there further discussion?
We had a pause when we were in the strike.
Within the motion, we are striking Section 4.5. If acceptable, we will issue a motion. You second? So the motion is to adopt Resolution 23-550 without Section 4.5. Any other further comments or questions? How is the favor of adopting Resolution 23-550? Please signify this thing out. Any opposed? Our motion is carried.
Thank you for being here, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Next is consideration of Ordinance 23-268 to provide the authority to correct the school nurse errors. Ms. Roth, do you have anything to say for that one for seven points?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, this was introduced at last month's meeting. No changes have been made. It basically authorizes the city clerk and the city attorney to make grammatical errors, corrections to ordinancees without bringing it back to council for approval.
Mayor, it's our seventh. Third second.
That's the motion, Mark.
Any further discussion? How is the favor of adopting Ordinance 23-268? Please signify this thing out.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's adopted. You went through a roll call because it's an ordinance?
Councilman Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Schuff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Faith? Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Romack?
Aye.
Councilmember Brainerd Watson?
Aye.
All right. Next item is I'd be consideration of City Ordinance 23-269, short-term vacation rentals. Is there anything further that you presented on that?
No, Mayor, there's been no changes.
Any questions or discussion by council? Question? Third second.
Second.
Further discussion? You have a question?
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Page 353. Prior to offering a vacation rental for rent for the first time, the owner should provide location to the neighbors. How does that, that language isn't real clear. How does that apply to people that are already doing it now? This won't be their first time. Do we care that the people are out there? We're only going to apply this to the new lease coming in or are they going to apply to everybody?
Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council? Thank you. So that is the exact quoted language from the state statute and this applies to everyone, regardless of whether they're part of an existing business or not. They all have to come in and get a permit.
So my question though is, this is the section that deals with notification of the neighbors.
Right. The notification of neighbors is a requirement to the permit. So everybody who has to come in to get a permit has to notify their neighbors for the first time. So when they're getting the permit, that would be their first time.
First time after the permit.
There is no.
You can't give them the permit number to get the permit.
There is no grandfathering. So after this ordinance, if this ordinance is adopted, after this ordinance becomes effective, everyone who operates a short-term rental within Litchfield Park has to obtain a permit and part of that process is for the first time they rent, they have to do this notification.
I'll be looking forward to it, might notice.
So here's my question. Do they do this neighbor, that neighbor, that neighbor, that neighbor? I mean, are we that specific? How many neighbors?
Yes. There's also requirements in here, 8-8-811, that in the backyard they have a pool. The pool has a separate pool enclosure. And we've got two methods to guard pools in a state. One is have the entire backyard enclosed and then have self-closing doors on the house, houses, stuff like that, self-closing gates. And then we've got the second system where the pool can have its own fence around it.
Correct.
This says that they have to have their own fence around the pool. And I don't know that.
No. This says that there has to be a pool, a pool enclosure regardless of the date. And that's just the title or the caption of the sub句, three, pool enclosure. Just says regardless of the date the swimming pool was installed, each vacation rental that has a swimming pool shall meet the minimum safety requirements provided in the ARS statute. And that statute outlines those different options of whether it has its own separate enclosure or whether it uses the structure as part of the enclosure, which would require certain, for example, you have to have two handles on the door, one at a certain height. The windows have to have certain mechanisms so that follows, it just requires them to follow state statute because that statute was enacted possibly after some of these pools were installed. So what it would do, it would require somebody, if I as a homeowner, if I, if I have a house that's 50 years old that has a pool that was built and permitted before these requirements, as part of this process to be able to rent that out to individuals, I need to bring that pool enclosure up to state's, minimum state statute. So it just requires that compliance with the current provisions.
It's going to monitor that? We're going to have that in the neighborhood statute, the application? Will Sandy hit it or?
Yeah, the application, we will put together, inform the application. We can have a statement on the application that I attest that if I have a swimming pool that meets these provisions or we can have an overall attestation with the application that has those requirements. If there is a concern, there's also the ability for city staff to do an inspection to make those determinations.
This section has, the last sentence of your item of the statute, exclusions ARS 36S 1681 D4 to 7, not 5. What are those, do you know?
Yes, so for example, D4, a swimming pool or contained body of water buried constructed prior, those are the exceptions in the state statute that would exclude essentially the grandfather clauses of the state statute that exclude pools that were constructed prior to that state statute. But because this is a permit requirement, because you're renting out your house to somebody who's coming from, you know, outside the community or outside the state, we want to make sure that if it has a pool, that it meets those minimum standards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Council?
Is there a motion to adopt City Ordinance 23-269, short-term vacation rental? Is there a second?
Second.
So we will just go through the city clerk, go and just do the roll call?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Instead of doing a voice vote, we'll just do the roll call.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Schuff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Faith?
Aye.
Councilmember James? Councilmember Romack?
Aye.
Councilmember Brainerd Watson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, next item is to consider adoption of Order 23-270, structured sober living homes. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, there are no changes to this document from last month. Effectively, what this ordinance does is under current city code, citations of a group home are civil for the first three and this would make that what they could actually be criminal. That's what this ordinance basically does. So welcome, any questions if there are any?
Any questions, Council?
Third second?
Second.
Do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Schuff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Faith?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Romack?
Aye.
Councilmember Brainerd Watson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, next item is consideration of Ordinance 23-271, front and trailer parking. Is there anything to present on this?
Mayor and Council, there was some discussion on this item last month. You may remember there was a question about RV parking. You'll see the font that was added in the ordinance, for example, the red font that was added in delivery vehicles in Section B. We also added that a non-commercial vehicle in the parking lot of retail establishment could be there more than four hours. The example was raised if someone drove their RV to Fry's and went to their shop, could they do that? And they could as long as they're not in there more than four hours. So that addresses that question. At this time, I'm going to refer to John, there was another question as well as far as RV parking.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, my understanding is, so what we did, the red, I think, is, the red text hopefully is responsive to the conversation that we had on this at the last meeting. The concern was about vehicles on private property that are making deliveries or picking things up and loading them into the vehicle. And I think someone put it very candidly and said, hey, just make sure that we can get groceries in a big vehicle. So that's what those are responsive to. I understand that there has been further discussion since that time about recreational vehicles possibly being an issue also. The loading of recreational vehicles, especially maybe being pulled in front of a private home to be loaded. So that's not reflected in red text, but probably is a change that could be made relatively easily if that was something the council was interested in. Probably the simplest way to do that would be where we say, and delivery vehicles, we could say, and recreational, and delivery vehicles. That would bring that into that 72-hour allowance for those things to be parked for loading and unloading. The current code language, which is being struck and replaced by this ordinance, does allow recreational vehicles to be parked for 72 hours. So that would be something of a lateral change if we were to incorporate that into the ordinance.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Yeah, I brought this up in my conversation with Nancy. Some of the others RVs will be in front of their house when they get unloaded up in the regular going. So typically what happens is you bring it out of the storage yard, park it in front of your house, you know, that day, spend the day, get it ready to go. Most people don't want to drive their RVs at night and they don't want to get someplace at night and have to unpack. So it sits there overnight, they get up the next morning sometime, boom, boom, they're out. So I, you know, as we discussed, I think it should be at least 24 hours. And I asked a question, how does this conflict with the ordinance that allowed RV parking in front of your yard? And I believe you're telling me that this is actually doing away with that ordinance or conflicted replacement?
Mr. Vice Mayor, that's correct. This is a strike and replace ordinance, so it's the same section. That section of code currently allows vehicles engaged in the process of loading or unloading for a period of up to 72 hours. And so that's where we get the, if we kind of just reference RV, recreational vehicles in that same 72-hour clause in the new ordinance, we're kind of preserving that 72-hour allowance.
Could we just strike everything in the new ordinance and accept that part, accept that clause?
Mr. Mayor, organizationally, that would be very difficult because the structure of the replacement is very different than the structure of the current ordinance.
Do we need 72 hours? I mean, that's a long time parking RV in front of your house. The neighbors would not be more happy for me. I would think a minimum of.
48 hours?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was saying. Minimum 24, maybe an extra 48 or something.
Another way to do it, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, might be in Section C, which is a new section. It says the restrictions set forth shall not apply to, we could add another sentence that said, you know, they should also not, shall also not apply to the parking of a recreational vehicle for purposes of loading and unloading for a period of not to exceed 48 hours. That would be another way to do it.
Just as a matter of process, I don't like many of these things in the United Council, David. So I think the best, the table is to take it back and fix it, bring it back to the system.
You'd like to?
So we need to, it's just a procedure, like do we need to adapt this to tables until the next meeting?
That would be the right way. And Mr. Mayor, just for the purpose of, so that we don't have to do it again, is that the only additional concern that the council has? Is recreational vehicles on a public street for a period of perhaps 48 hours?
Public street in front of your house.
Yeah.
For the owner's house. Are you driving? Are you driving?
All right, public or private, but.
We don't want to open it up to just parking an RV anywhere in Litchfield Park. Let you have 48 hours.
So we want to keep the loading, unloading.
You have to have a relationship with the owner of the home. To explain to Nancy, there's a growing trend, this old RV is being bought for a few thousand dollars and parked on a semi-permanent basis along the streets in some of our neighboring states. And it's a pit and we don't want to get into that. So somehow it's going to be tied to the resident, you know, maybe a piece of property.
Mr.? Sorry. Mr. Vice Mayor, there's actually one which is in the ordinance that covers that for no overnight habitation. That's covered in there currently. Let me ask you, so from one of you got 44 hours, from another one turned 48. How many hours, how many numbers would you like it to be?
48 hours in front of your house.
48, okay, just making sure.
Okay, so can I put the devil's estimate?
That's what I do, yeah.
So I know someone who has one, has one that he's, not a bus, but he's converted to an RV. And he takes it out and he generally spends the first day in the kennel, getting it up and running. Then the second day, he'll be getting it up and running and cooled down. And then they get the groceries and stuff, so they take it for mature in three days to get off onto the road. Is there provision anywhere of us being able to give them, I don't know, maybe a permit to park it an additional 24 hours or?
The answer is no. We haven't followed, I guess, 72 hours and so it hasn't been a problem.
Right, and that's what he's been following.
I run from 72 hours to reasonable. 72 hours, he's only making 72, it's 48.
It's reasonable, the guy knows the RV, not the neighbors.
Not the neighbors. My suggestion is go to 48 and then if it turns out we have a problem, then we consider it. The 48 hour time, I mean, I have to bring this bus up, get it running, cool it down, do it all, and two days there, it's easy to go.
Okay.
If it turns out to be a problem?
We'll worry about it, we'll get back to next one, sir.
That'll be fine.
I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are all the question marks about staff regulation?
There with me.
I'm thinking 40. Oh, I'm wrong, sorry. It's on cruise vehicles. Sorry, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to table IG and afterwards 23-271, regular vehicle?
Second.
How is the favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, stable. Next item is tentative budget adoption. Speeders.
Mayor and Council. Tonight we have the fiscal year 2024 tentative budget adoption that will set the maximum spending limit for next year and also authorize us to publish the notes at a public hearing. Just a quick recap of our next steps tonight is on the 17th to adopt the tentative budget. Next month, on June 21st, we will hold the public hearing. That's when a number of the publicists available to come and speak of the proposed budget. We'll adopt the final budgets for the city and the special districts. We'll adopt the physician roster, the salary range schedule and the five-year capital plan. And then the final step in the budget process will be on July 18th, when we adopt the tax levies for the CFDs and the streetlight improvement districts. This is just the legal official budget forms table. This is just the legal official budget forms table of contents, next slide please. Schedule A, this gives us the details of the available resources and expenditures. The total resources available are forty-nine million, one hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. And our budget expenditures are thirty-four million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight. Next slide please. This is the total budget summary comparing fiscal year twenty-four to the current fiscal year twenty-three. You can see our operating budget for twenty-four is twelve hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eighty-four, so an increase of three point one nine percent, or just under three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Our capital budget, this current fiscal year, we budgeted over thirty-three million, but that was because we had thought there might be a need for parking garages. So that's why there's such an increase in the capital budget this year at just over nineteen million. Our debt service budget, last year was one point eight million, but that had included one million for a new debt service, which we ended up issuing less debt than we thought. So for fiscal year twenty-four, this includes the bond that you approved tonight, so that one, just under one point seven million. Contingency budget of one point six million, six hundred thousand of that is for operations and one million is for capital. The amount subject to our expenditure limitation is, sorry, twenty-three million, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty. But we do have approximately twenty million that will be subject to the expenditure limit. Next slide please. The personnel summary, our positions stay nearly flat, they actually decreased by a point two-three. The benefits total, thirty-two percent of wages. We have built-in ten percent salary adjustment, but we have some staff changes, so the increase in wages overall is just over seven percent. The increase in benefits is just under six percent. And then the employer taxes and workers' comp is just over six percent. So grand total increase of six point six nine percent for personnel. Next slide please. Last month, there was a discussion about getting updated CPI. When I was preparing this presentation, all that was available was through March, and at that time it was five percent. If you could look at it today, it was updated through April, and that was about four point nine percent, so a small change. Next slide please. They also do the CPI for the Phoenix area. Through February, that was the latest data that they had, it was eight and a half percent. And just to recap, we went over this at the study session, but the West Valley average for their cost of living adjustment combined is nine percent. Next slide please.
You said, you got that says the West Valley is nine percent?
Yes, we surveyed the other cities.
The cities changing the compensation match?
Yes.
Yeah, then we don't have that, that says the CPI changed, huh?
No, just for the Phoenix area, you can go back one.
I said eight, it's eight and a half in February.
Correct. Next slide please. Just a few highlights, our budget balance or ongoing revenues are covered by our ongoing expenses. And our bloodtime expenses are covered by our bloodtime revenues, our accumulated fund balance and our revenue bonds. The eleven point five million that you approved earlier will cover all of the expenditures for Litchfield Square in fiscal year twenty-four. We won't need to use any accumulated fund balance until fiscal year twenty-five. We maintain solid reserves of six point two million, which is six months preserved. And that's only if we spend that full capital budget, the city typically never does. Plus thirteen point eight million remaining on a sign general fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. Next slide please. And that is my quick budget summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Motion to adopt the county budget?
Second. Any further discussion on the tentative budget? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Questions? Tendative streetlight improvement, SLID budget for twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
Any further discussion on the SLID budget for twenty twenty-four? Tendative budget? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item, introduction order is twenty-three dash two seventy-three on speed limits. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had several concerns here, including the increase in speed limit on both Camelback and Litchfield Road. We have completed a speed study, sent it to the course. We were trying to speed, though it should require a little more study to show the limit is needed. And the award study would support lowering both Litchfield Road and Camelback Road to thirty-five. Sorry, is that better? I'm correct, one, sorry. Again, it's support lower in both, it's got a thirty-five mile an hour. But again, there are sections of Litchfield Road, of course, that are already at twenty, so just roundabout. But the rest of it would be in thirty-five, same name as Camelback. So that being said, it's currently in city code that for years, of course, the city truck route was Litchfield Road. So for years, the only road listed was Litchfield. So it would change that to say that the speed limit on Litchfield Road would change from forty to thirty-five. And we're also adding other streets, because if you read in here, it says that if the other road's not listed, it's a twenty-five. And of course, for example, you would automatically make it nicer to twenty-five, that wouldn't work. So we add in here that the speed limit on Camelback, it will be thirty-five, the speed limit on Nicer will be forty-five. The city manager has the discretion to change speed limits after discussion with the city engineer. But again, we get to the water study here. But again, that's why we're listing out specific roads to address those things. And this is for our first rule.
Okay, questions? Yes, what about?
I guess I have a question as to why are we doing this? From forty to thirty-five, is that what it is, right? It's forty right now?
The Litchfield Road it would be. So Camelback, Camelback's actually a forty-five from current, isn't it? And I would tell you, there's people going probably forty and forty-five on both roads.
Seems awfully slow to me to go from the roundabout all the way to Camelback going thirty-five miles an hour. I don't know. I mean, I get the people that are going too fast, they shouldn't be, but I don't, I don't know. I'm just curious. I mean, have we ticketed a lot of people? Have there been, you know, outrageous amount of issues? I mean, the roundabout, but what do we have, fifteen to twenty thousand people traveling that road a day?
About fifteen thousand. I would tell you, the warrant study would support lowering to thirty-five, so there is a need there for a slow going to show it otherwise. But I would say it is a good slowdown, and Mr. Mayor reminds, my wife, for like a struggle with twenty-five on the shore. I think it's a bit interesting.
That's nice.
What's the other reason?
Noise.
Really, a huge amount of noise with five miles an hour, if it's?
It's fixing it.
It's not a fix, it's a mo-
There was, we can slow down the forty, forty-five, if you're ready. Yeah, just say whatever it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I'll say, put the police there, it might be more than me.
Any further discussion about speed limits? Council, all right, please. Mr. Mayor, this is the first time, I've been here long, Tom, this is the first time we've ever talked about doing speed limits here as a city council. I, I'm not sure whether this is in our purview or whether Matthew just deals with it on his own, so you know?
Well, Councilman Romack, some of it is, but the reason we had to specifically list it because Litchfield Road was already spelled out. For that reason, we had to change it into ordinance, sir. Because it was the city truck route before. For that reason, we had to specifically spell it out and change it. For the other roads, I could change, that's why.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's the necessary step in the process of slowing down the traffic around Litchfield Park, particularly on Camelback. I mean, stoplights going to go in there eventually, Fry's, potentially roundabout down there. So I mean, it's, we've got, this is just, you know, you try to throw that in without this step, it seems like a proper step.
It is a step in the process. Other questions from council? If not, is there a motion to adopt the...
It's a perjury motion.
Introduce ordinance, I've been trying to cross up on the block. All right, introduce ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-three. Again, this is introduction only, so we'd like for further discussion on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the introduction? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance is introduced. Next item is adoption of ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-four, establishing procedure for charter election. Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Mr. Council. So this ordinance, I guess the simplest way to put it is, there's a lot of routine things that cities and towns do, and adopting a charter is not one of them. And so there are a lot of fine details that we don't have any provision. So, you know, what's the rule on this, or what's the procedure or the deadline for this? And there's nothing. So this is a gap filler, and basically what we're doing is we're laying out the process for the election that we're setting in the fall. So if you look through it, you can notice a lot of that stuff, petition requirements, deadlines, processes. So basically what we're doing is we're setting the procedure so that we don't invite a challenge of, hey, how'd you make that decision? We'll say, this is how we made it, we set it, we set the process out by an ordinance and we followed it. And the reason it has an emergency clause is because we are on the clock. We got to get people, people need to get their petitions going. And we also need to be able to work with the county and communicate with them and make sure that the election is ready to go.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Yes, please. Motion to adopt twenty-three two seventy-four, any favor?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Mayor Shoup?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Faith?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Romack?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Watson?
Aye.
Twenty-seven.
Ordinance passes.
All right. Next item is a consideration of magistrate contract. This is an item that we're only going to executive session on. So is there a motion to go into executive session under item eleven?
L.
Well...
E.
B. So we want, we're in the executive session, we want to deal with the other items that we need to have executive session on, and this is executive session. Or we want to come out of the executive session and go back in. It's fine, I'm just asking, that's what's the pleasure of the council. Okay, well, we'll move, the motion will be to go to executive session on item eleven.
D, C, and D. A.
Do A two. So...
Want to make one?
Right.
A, C, and D.
A, C, and D, is there a second?
Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are, we're in the executive session under items A, C, and D. So when we come out of the executive session, we probably will knock down two of the judicial rules in this, but we have our own elements left.
Motion to action.
What we do, we get back into the regular session. All right, do you have to do anything before you go?
I don't think so. She gets the recording.
Okay.
It starts now, you're ready?
You're ready? All right, the regular session is back in order. We have to, we need to take, we need a motion to take no action on item L.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we need a motion to adjourn.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close the polls.
Run, Jesse.